Welcome, everybody, to the July 11th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Walk off, please.
Barkley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Gorgon. Ewer. Benner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Hansen from Hazenville, Pennsylvania.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of your gifts to us. We thank you for cool air on a hot day, a shady spot under a tree. We thank you for our daily bread. We thank you for the forgiveness of sins. We thank you for empowering us to forgive others as we've been forgiven. I lift up each of the council members here tonight and Mayor Kessler. I pray for their needs and the needs in their families. I pray for those watching at home right now, just to know that you love them and care about them. And, Father, if we just put our trust and our hope in you, that all things work together for good. Be with the council tonight as they work through the budget process, give them wisdom with their resources. And again, we thank you for every blessing that we have, for this day and these opportunities. We thank you for this great city in which we live and call home, through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we have the approval of minutes, minutes of June 13th, 2022. Councilman Crum.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 13th, 2022 business meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Harton.
Epstein.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Next, item one, citizens to be heard. We have no one on the schedule tonight. Item two, approval of licenses and bonds. We have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolution, none. Item four, notices of communication, a covering body announcements. Councilman Crum.
There's some stuff going on at the library, mostly this coming week. Tomorrow, at 10:30 a.m., there will be summertime in the, excuse me, summer storytime, and the book they're doing tomorrow will be Clark the Shark. And then their free summer movie matinee at 3:00 will be Dolphin Tale Two. There will be popcorn and bottled water will be provided. And then on Thursday, the 14th, from 3:30 to 6:30, they're going to be having an activity to basically show kids how to make their own balloon animals, so balloon animal making. A reminder that the library, the friends of the library do a book sale during the hometown market event every week, so if you would like some, maybe a big supply of books and maybe some unique topics at a good price, you can come check theirs out. And also a reminder that the citywide garage sale is coming up, August 13th and 14th, and the permits for that sale will go on sale a week from today, so July 18th, you can start buying your garage sale permits for that event. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have the senior center announcements. So tomorrow, on July 12th, will be a WSU well rep. That's at 10:30 in the morning. Wednesday, July 13th, advanced learning library, native art exhibit, and lunch outing. They are leaving the senior center at 11:10. Thursday, July 14th, Funko at 1:00 p.m. Friday, July 15th, the luau, that's at 6:00 p.m. The reservations were due last week. Wednesday, July 20th, commodities at 1:00 p.m. Thursday, July 28th, Village Inn breakfast outing at 8:30. The Hazenville Hustle numbers for June of this year, last month, the one-way riders were 392 riders compared to last year of 178, and new registered riders for June of 2022 was 22 compared to 10 last year. All right, next, B, Setre County Fire Department Station 34 monthly report. It's in your packet. C memo for business location change. It's also in your packet. ABIV health and wellness located at 137, Pierner Suite 6. We have D quarterly economics development report. Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have the second quarter economic development report in your packets. I'll, again, just go through a couple of items, and then I can answer any questions. So first, I still included the last few years of data on several items as reference. Also listed amounts and quantities to date in the first and second quarter totals for 2022. Next, I reported counts on a few events listed on page five. In April, that includes the McConnell Information Fair, where we had 92 participants that came to our booth to talk to us. In May, the Bike With Mayor event had 56 participants. And in June, we had the Kansas Business Appreciation Event, and we had 31 business members attending that event. I also wanted to point out an upcoming event on page six. We will have a Women and Minority Business Certificate Information Seminar presented by the Kansas Department of Commerce on Friday, August 19th, from 11 to noon at the library. The certificate is for businesses that are over 50% owned and run by women or minorities, and I'll start getting the word out to businesses in and surrounding Hazenville. Also on page six, under marketing, I wanted to point out that now all available real estate in Hazenville and some in our area of influence are now listed in links under the business development page. This includes both land and businesses in two separate links. The buildings include both properties for sale and for lease. And I'll continue to keep this updated. I do think this information being readily available in one place will be helpful. Finally, listed on page seven and eight is the 2021 and 2022 grants that the city has applied for, both awarded and not awarded. Grants are included in that. I do think this was a nice addition to the report, so I wanted to thank Councilman Crum for bringing that up during the last report. That's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions, comments?
Councilman Barkley.
On the Women and Minority Business Certificate, is that a certificate that they receive?
Yes.
Where does that get them?
They have to apply for it.
If they apply for it and get it, where does that get them?
So.
Above another business.
Do what, I'm sorry?
Above another business, where would that get them?
So that might help them with applying for grants, just to be able to say that they are over 50% owned and ran by women, minority, and it also may help them with, like, out-of-state contracts. Or in and out-of-state contracts. I don't know, there's supposed to be a grant coming up also that are for women and minority of businesses, and I did ask if this certificate was going to be required in order to get that grant, and they said at this time they don't know.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you, Danielle. All right, next, we have E, emails from Cox Communication, a couple of emails in your packet. Item five, old business, none. Item six, other business. A, presentation of 2023 budget, approval of notices to exceed revenue neutral rate, and publication of notice of public hearings. Will.
So I've got a PowerPoint presentation to go over some of the main points of the budget, and if you guys have questions during the presentation, you can stop me and ask them then, or if you want to wait until the end, it's up to you. So the main points, I think I wanted to reiterate, and these are also in the memo, it's in the packet. The main points of this budget, number one, it revises the pay chart with consideration for the CPI increase year-over-year from May of '21 to May of '22, and the salary survey that we put together. It also changes our retirement program for commissioned police officers from capers to KPNF. And the third point there is that it leaves the mill rate unchanged from this year's budget. So just an overview, we're going to look at a little bit of info on pay chart revision, KPNF, what that'll mean. We'll look at mill levy comparison to the 2022 budget compared to the proposed 23 budget. Look at the assessed valuation increase from year-to-year. Go over the city sales tax, a few staff adjustments, personnel detail for COLAs and step increases that we've had this year. We'll look at the current outstanding principal on our debt service, go over the ARPA projects that we've got lined up, and I'll go over and highlight some public works items that are coming up, and then we'll go over the next steps in the budget process and hopefully answer all the questions you might have. On the pay chart revision, we looked at the Consumer Price Index and the change year-over-year. Last year, when we were going through the budget process for 2022, we got up to May of 2021. So for this year's process for the 2023 budget, we looked at May of 2021 to May of 2022, and the increase in CPI year-over-year was 8.6%. And then we also put together an internal salary survey, and we started that, and then after we put in information that we got from calling other cities, we got the League of Kansas Municipalities Salary Survey that they put together, and we added that information in as well. The result of that is that in the proposed budget, we adjusted all positions on the pay chart by the greater of either the 8.6% increase or the results of the salary survey. So if the salary survey said that we should increase it by 10%, we increased it by 2% versus the 8.6%. For KPNF, some brief points on it. The proposed budget would change all commissioned police officers from capers to KPNF, but the years of service that were earned under capers will apply towards officers vesting in KPNF. The KPNF is a defined benefit retirement program. Depending on when you hired in, people that more recently hired in, capers is now basically a defined contribution, what you put in it plus the interest rate that they get at the state, you get paid out, all of that. With a defined benefit, they go on your, they look at your highest average salaries, they look at your years of service, and you get a benefit each month until you pass away. And you can also select other things at the time of retirement, like surviving spouse benefits, which that's in capers and KPNF. So also KPNF has some different disability benefits that are improvement over capers. As far as what it costs to make this change, for employees, their contribution goes up from 6% to 7.15%, and for the employer, the contribution goes up from 8.43% to 22.6%. Those are the figures for 2023. In the proposed budget, the move to KPNF is effective January 1st, 2023. This is the mill levy comparison from this year's budget to the proposed budget. You can see the overall certified mill rate for the 2022 budget was 45.448. Where we got in the proposed budget is 45.443, so virtually unchanged. It's 5,000ths of a. All right, next slide, please. This one just shows a change in assessed valuation. Our final valuation from November of last year was $70,450,000, and our mid-year valuation this year is $76 million, for an increase in valuation of $5.678 million. On the city sales tax, this is our one cent sales tax, started July 1st, 2014, goes through June 30th, 2024. Our estimate for next year is $1.22 million, with 50% going to the street, sales tax reserve, 10 to the park, and 40 to the rec. Our 2022 budget amount was $1.1 million, and as you guys have seen, the reports come out each month, it's, the sales tax really was coming in very well, so we bumped it up for next year. Some of those staff adjustments that we've got for the second half of this year in the 2023 proposed budget. In administrative services, we've changed from having three part-time drivers for the Hazenville Hustle to one full-time driver. In recreation, we reduced the recreation assistance and increased one program coordinator, which is a full-time versus part-time. And in public works, years ago, we had a position that was city inspector, and we had a position that was code enforcement. At one point, those two were combined. So at this point, after looking through the salary, different salaries from surrounding cities and performing the salary survey, I'm proposing to split those back into two separate positions. Personnel detail, the first couple items, well, the first item is basically just what we've already done this year in the 2022 budget. We had a cost of living increase of 58 cents to step one of all positions on the pay chart. That was effective the first full pay period in January of this year. And then also in the 2022 budget, was a one-step increase with a satisfactory performance evaluation effective in the first full pay period in July. In the proposed budget, with the pay chart revision that I've already mentioned, I would like to make that effective the first full pay period after the budget approval, and that would be the adjustment we've already talked about. Looking at debt service, on our outstanding debt, the GO bond principal, mid-year this year, we've got $8.22 million. Our total principal payments this year are $915,000, and so next June, that would leave us at $7,305,000 principal on the GO bonds. Temporary notes, right now, we just have two out. One is for the rotary press equipment, and we've already made one payment on that, so we have three more payments. Final payment will be February 1st, 2025. And then we have the $1.845 million out for the copper tail infrastructure. That's a two-year temporary note, giving us $2.15 million total out in temporary notes right now. And this is for the new activities center. You can see our payment for this year is $260,587, $155,000 principal. Once we make that payment, we'll have $2.735 million left. This is the total amount that we received from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we have received all those funds to date. And last year, council looked at the projects, and so just listed those out again, the projects we're planning on using this money for, the wire water line replacement, Humberford water line design hand replacement, and both of those will come up later today in the meeting for approval for the construction of those projects. Then other improvements, corrosion control facility design and construction, and then also a portion of the AMI water meter system project. Tony has an update on that in department reports. Here are a few of the public works highlights to show some of the dollar amounts we've got for different projects. We've got in the proposed budget $90,000 for cured and replaced pipe, which is when we put that plastic sleeve in the old wastewater lines, heat it up, expand it to both increase the, decrease the infiltration into the lines and increase the movement of the wastewater. We have $30,000 in for manhole repair, $30,000 for upsizing the Southampton lift station pump. Within the water department, we have $120,000 in the proposed budget for a new variable frequency drive, high-service pump. This would be a pump that would have pumped in the towering throughout the distribution system. Could be an addition that would give us some redundancy and also address future system needs. Also in the water department, we've got $60,000 for a generator to be on site to power both, all three of wells 7, 8, and 9. Currently, when we need to power those during a power outage, we have to take a trailer generator out to the wells. Also in the water department, we've got $35,000 proposed for water treatment and right, water ed studying, and $65,000 for a storage building for equipment and materials. In the street, we do have $32,000 for a new mower for drainage ditches, and $2750 for painting a dump truck bed that was brought up as a council member concern. And then in stormwater, we give $45,000 for a stormwater master plan. And finally, in the parks department, $32,000 for a truck and $22,000 for a mower. The next steps in the budget process, the proposed budget does have us exceeding the revenue neutral rate, so the next steps would be to inform the county clerk of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This is due to the county clerk by July 20th, so we would need a motion to state the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, including the date, time, and location of the revenue neutral rate, public hearing, and state the proposed tax rate in the budget. We then publish the notice of public hearing, newspaper, and on the website, hold the revenue neutral rate hearing, and during that hearing, adopt a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate by roll call. We then hold the regular budget hearing, and we would adopt the budget. So after I've answered any questions you might have on the proposed budget, here's a sample motion that we could use if you want to go forward with the proposed budget. And that's what I've got for the presentation, so hoping any questions?
You put that last slide up again? Councilman Crum?
Yeah, I did come up today and talk to Will because I had a handful of questions. I usually, if I notice a big change on something, I'll ask him about it, so he helped me out for about 45 minutes tonight. Today, I just kind of want to let everybody know that I had come up and done that. Well, I did have one question. You said for the, the switch on the retirement for the police, the new interest, the new rate right now is like 22 something percent. Who sets that, and how often does that change?
The state sets that. Whoever runs the capers, the KPNF boards set those rates. They look at the amount they have in there, and they look at the number of people in the program, they have actuaries that determine rate.
Okay, so that could, could change every year, basically, with the state budget?
And our capers rate through the years has changed, but it's been pretty, pretty consistent. So I imagine that number would stay pretty consistent unless there's a big change at the state level in how they view their retirement program.
Okay. Thanks.
That's all I have. Councilman Walters?
Yeah, first of all, thanks, Will, for all the work you've done on this. I don't know if this is the place to ask, but I do have a question. There is another organization that does a lot of work and should be intricately involved in a lot of what we, as a city, do, and we've kind of left them out of the loop a lot. I'm wanting to know if there's some way we can institutionalize helping to support them as we go forward, and of course, I'm talking about her chamber. I know we did give them some support this, this year, and I'm sure they're very appreciative of that. The reason I'm asking if there's some way we can institutionalize, and I know they do get some funding sometimes in the, in the distant past from the bed tax, the institutionalized portion of that, adding it to our budget as a line item, I think would be beneficial both to the city, obviously, and to them. Something we may not know here is that the director of that organization plans on retiring in seven months. Maybe you do know that. The other thing I would ask, is there some way we can provide some training funds to them? They do run on a very limited budget. I would hate to see a time where we're, we don't have one and we're at loss with the work that they're doing, which I think should and probably does, to some degree, we're hand in hand with our economic developer. But two things there, one, is there some way we can institutionalize support, helping to support that, because many of the cities around Hazenville do support their chamber to quite an extent. And secondly, is there someone who can also help support as far as training for the new director, which should, would probably come there within about seven months, I'd be used to now in retirement? That was my end.
I think the mayor is very supportive of the chamber.
He is, thank you very much.
I think if we wanted to, just add that as a separate note in the capital improvements fund budget in the details section, so that's, that's an easy adjustment. We'd like to do that if you had an amount in mind, or if the mayor's an amount in mind, I could put that in.
Super, super.
I think this year, it came out of economic development, or that's how it came out this year.
Okay, great, great. I, I'd ask go to the director, and I don't think he's really wanting necessarily the city to have oversight, because, you know, he likes to be in, to agree, but I'm looking for long-term. And I think we need to be more supportive there, and also to help ensure that the direction this goes forward is that it's tied together with how we're doing with the city, because it certainly impacts what is happening in Hazenville.
Okay, sure. Councilman, better?
Will, I know you and I had some discussion about this earlier, but would you refresh my mind, please, and maybe for the benefit of some of the rest of them, about what we've done in the budget this year regarding fuel costs, since they've gone up so drastically in the last year?
Right, so normally in the budget, we've got a couple different accounts that handle the fuel purchases, and the police department, you'll see one in the wastewater department. So I looked at what we had spent, basically dollar-wise, on average, the last couple of years in the police department, and we'd been budgeting, as you can tell in the budget on the detail, we had been budgeting $2.50 per gallon. So I took what we spent last year, $27,000, I basically just divided that by the 2.50 and multiplied by 4.50. Not knowing what gas prices are going to do, but I thought 4.50 would be decent for a budget number at this point in time. So basically, they've been increased by that, that ratio.
Thank you. Councilman Crum?
I was just going to go back to what Councilman Walters was talking about, the chamber. Something like that, does it have to be some way to do as a line item, or is that something that we could just allow the chamber to request stuff out of economic development for specific things, like? If they had a training and they were having trouble covering that, they could come to us and ask for that, and we could decide if that was a good use of that money out of economic development, instead of just actually having a spot for them in the budget? Because I don't really see how we could give them a line item budget, especially if we don't have any oversight on what they're doing. So I was wondering, is that, because I don't know how we did it last year, you said it came out of economic development. Did they just come and request it, or did we just help them out?
They did ask for it, and we gave them some. Under my signature authority, you know, I can spend up to, you know, a certain dollar amount, $10,000, so it was well below that. So that's how it was paid us this year.
And so we did that this year in the auditorium, so had no trouble at all with that, right?
No, they've got no problems. For years and years, we gave $10,000 to Hazenville Forward and $5,000 to the chamber, and then Hazenville Forward, of course, is no longer an entity, and with the chamber, that stopped under the previous administration, so.
Okay, so that's something we wouldn't necessarily need to give a line to, we could just continue to do it this way and give it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that would, that would keep the oversight away.
Right.
Was there no oversight, I guess, also with HFI and Pride was getting as well? We did it the same way with them, you know?
So with Hazenville Forward as an entity, you know the membership, the entity, chambers, schools, city, and then business members. So we had a good say with having three to four members on HFI throughout the entire time, as to where the funds were spent.
Councilman Barkley?
I've got a couple of questions. So since I'm newer, this might have been something that was in the past that I don't know about. Why Southampton need a lift station?
Tony can answer the details of that.
So it's at the sanitary sewer lift station, so we were able to trim our pumps that lift the sanitary sewer to our wastewater treatment plant. Looking at those trends, we can see the hours on those two pumps are running more, so instead of waiting for us to have a problem or not the capacity to pump the sanitary sewer, and the budget is upside, so it was not just for current needs, but also any future development down the road. There's a big wet well out there in Southampton that's pumped to our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. And then just another question I had was, I was looking at the PV budget, and their training budget is like 13 grand?
Yep.
And like compared to like your office equipment repair, I think that's even more just for office equipment. So if you guys want to do more training on, if something comes out, is there an option where we can increase their training budget?
Yeah.
If they request it?
With, Chief can answer more specifics on the training that we can take within the general fund and adjust funds. So within the police department, they could spend more on training and less on something else, and then within the general fund as a total, the police department could spend more than budgeted if another one, if another department spends less.
Okay.
And usually, we use those funds and it kind of gauges where we're at, and if we, if we do have some major training thing that we need to do or accomplish, we can, we just adjust those funds accordingly, as far as, we would spend less on one and more on the other, so it's kind of fluid, but it's just as long as we stay within our budget. That's how we do it.
Any other questions? Council? Anybody like to make a motion?
Council, you better pick up there.
Councilperson pardon?
I'm going to do a purr of our intent to take.
I'm going to do a proof of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, set the revenue neutral rate public hearing and budget hearing for September twelfth, two thousand, or twenty-twenty-two at seven PM at City Hall and stated the proposed tax rate to be forty-five point four four three. And presented.
Second.
Yeah, motion on second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Berkeley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you, Will. He was a Excel guru. So I mean, he spent a lot of time in that, a lot of charts and a lot of cells linked to other cells. Thanks, Will. All right, next we have the item B, consideration of aquatic feasibility study. We'll just have to look into this just because of the age of our pool. It's around thirty years old or so. And this will give us a study as far as the condition of the pool, the history of issues, the hack members' requests, different aquatic based programs, community desires, so, and the feasibility of concepts. So basically, it's to, you know, see what's out there, see what we currently have, see what's needed, see what the community wants. And Tony can answer any other questions.
Councilman Walters?
Yes, on the surface, it certainly seems like a very good idea. Before I came on, I was aware or found out about how the last pool came about. At least, maybe I've got some of that wrong. But I want to know how the public that voted for that, how they're using that, are able to use that now and what would change if we did this, spent forty-six thousand dollars on a feasibility study? Would that, what could that do for the people of Hayesville?
You talking about the facility at the high school?
Yeah.
I can't answer that, Walter.
Yeah, I mean, that's a school district location. I mean, the city doesn't have anything to do with it. I think Rob does have periods of time that they can use it for either swim lessons or open swim, but it's very limited.
Was that not borrowed on by the people of Hayesville for a pool in Hayesville? And my understanding, and then after it was approved, then they decided that they didn't have parking space, moved it to the high school?
So that's a, it was a complicated process when it happened. And the school district had a bond issue. And Councilmember Crum can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but the main points of the bond issue that they put to the vote, safety and security of all their schools, and also an auditorium. And so at times during that process, it was talked about having that auditorium inside Hayesville, like right in the middle of the city somewhere. And we had talked about having it close to the current location of the activity center. After the election happened and the bond issue passed, at some point, things didn't work out between the city and the school district. The school district built a pool adjacent to, attached to as a part of campus high school. Isn't that fair?
Yeah. When the bond was coming out, they said that they had hoped to get it in the city. They didn't say they were going to get the pool put in the city. They said they would hope to put it in the city. And now that the city does have what they call, they have like first rights to the pool up there. So like during the winter, they're doing swim lessons and stuff up there. And sometimes we may have an activity that, say, our year round swim team wants to have a practice. The city has a higher priority than the year round swim team. So basically, if Jill puts in that the city may want the pool on these dates, if there's not a school, a direct school activity scheduled at that time, then the city gets the pool. They have the next priority. So like, they even have more of a priority than the year round swim team because the year round swim team's a community team. It's not the unified USD two sixty-one team. Does that make sense?
Not really. What do you mean the city has, who in the city has?
Like the direct department, direct department. Jill can put in a request, use the facility. And if there's not?
Does that happen? Does that happen?
Yeah.
For swim lessons?
They have year round swim lessons. They, in the past, they also have had a adult aerobics class. They do do things down there at the pool.
Do they have like a membership for those in the hack to use that pool year round or something?
We're, currently, we're able to offer swim lessons.
Just swim lessons?
Swim lessons, and in the past, we've done aerobics and limited.
They had open swims for a while, too, a couple of nights a week when they were doing swim lessons or maybe when they were doing aerobics, they would have open swims at the same time. So the hack does use the facility on occasion. And they, like I said, they are a higher priority than everybody else but the school district.
But it was a, was it a city bond?
It was a school bond. And the pool was actually the last thing they did on the bond. The bond put in, I don't know, six tornado shelters, maybe, throughout the district. It put secure entries on all the buildings that didn't have them already. Took, added some parking spaces out at Oakville, I believe. And then they expanded the shop classes at campus. They put in the auditorium and they increased the size of the tennis court area because you have to have a certain number of tennis courts to be able to host your own events. And campus used to have to host their events somewhere in Wichita because we didn't have enough courts. So they used it for expanding the courts out there so the campus can host their own tennis meets as well. So it was a, it was a really big bond, had a lot of different things in it.
Some of the feedback I've gotten is that the citizens were kind of disappointed in the results. So that, I guess that's water under the bridge, so to speak. Regardless, I guess my question is, what might we expect if we were to approve this feasibility study? What might, what might be the logical outcome of this?
Tony?
So basically, part project deliverables from the consultant would be three to four design ideas for a pool. And it also evaluate indoor pool, look at the amenities, look at the regional aspect. There's obviously several pools, the YMCA Derby has pools. What amenities would be valuable? Stakeholder engagement. They call out two town hall meetings with the public. Swim team obviously would be a stakeholder, city staff, other community members. Also online surveys and those type of items. Basically, the study is to, the main thing is to look at our current pool, evaluate it, the issues that we have with it. It could be, they could, could come back with a renovation of the existing pool with an addition. Or it could be structurally mechanically, this pool needs too much work. We just need to rip it out of the ground and start over. This main part, beginning of it, will be the evaluation of the existing pool. And then kind of the city staff be kind of pointing them and giving a vision on what we think the community wants. And then towards the middle of that is when they'll sit down with stakeholders and really look at what the community wants.
So we pay someone forty-six thousand dollars to tell us that?
Yeah. We don't have the means to mechanically evaluate the pool, whether it be pump issues.
I can probably tell you.
We all have our opinions, probably, I know I do, but yeah.
We went through the same process with the old activity center, the exact same thing, a study for a new building versus an old building.
Yeah.
I mean, the current pool is.
Sixty thousand dollars and now it's a dump. I'm just saying, that's, I'm sure it's what we have to do.
Well, there comes a time when you got to quit dumping money into an old thing if it's not going to be worth it.
Yeah.
And also part of the deliverables, they'll actually give us concept designs of those three to four plans. They'll give us the construction estimate on those plans. They'll give us operational costs, projections for staffing, those type of things. So kind of give us a business model as well moving forward. And that doesn't, this doesn't commit us to design at all. It's just looking into it, talking to the community stakeholders and going from there.
Councilman Crum?
I like the idea of getting it done just to compare us around other areas. But I also think, I really like the idea of the fact that they're going to talk to community members and see, because I think on a hot day right now, if you go by the pool, three o'clock in the afternoon, there's hardly room for that thing. So I think if we want to keep being a community that wants young families to come here and do things, we have fantastic parks, we have great hike and bike trails. I think we probably ought to look to see what they think we could do to make that pool that way. I honestly think an indoor swimming area is a good idea. I don't think it would have to be that big. Kind of talked to Will and the mayor about this today. You look at the Y, they have three lanes and twenty yards. And so, I mean, that would not take that huge of an area. That would still be feasible to be able to use for swimming laps. They might want to do something a little bit bigger for lessons and stuff like that. But I think the biggest part of this would be the outdoor kind of water park kind of thing with hopefully maybe I'll do something with a little bit of indoor swimming, but it wouldn't have to be that big, I don't think. But again, I like that if we can get from, if we find out from the citizens that the citizens definitely like, definitely think it's needed. I think that's a really positive thing because whenever we do surveys, one of the big concerns is we need more things for kids to do. And I think if we had a bigger park like that, it may alleviate some of that problem with some of those kids. And I think some of the behavior problems that they have at the pool, a lot of it may just be because there's so many people in such a small area. And if you get people spread out, maybe you'd have a little bit less behavior issues.
What council like to do? Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the bid for forty-six thousand five hundred for the aquatic feasibility study from Land Winerson?
Winerson?
Second.
I just have one more question.
The motion on second, is there any discussion? Councilman Berkeley?
Do we have to get that?
The study?
Yeah.
I mean, no, I mean, we can choose whatever we want to do. I think the study is kind of our justification to the taxpayers that we're, because you know, a new indoor aquatic facility or outdoor aquatic facility can either from five, and the school's spending just under ten million. We're talking about a large amount of money. So I think justification and the due diligence to make sure we're doing the right thing is kind of what it's for.
So if I had a question, that the bond that we ended up paying for or are paying for for the auditorium, if we have to go back to the citizens again for a vote and that would increase our taxes again to the, what was it this time?
I don't know, but that was a school bond, this is a city bond, different.
But people still pay for it.
Well, yeah, except the school district paid for it. School district's much bigger than the city.
Yeah, most people, okay. We don't know, but it would be another maybe ten million over timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, that's a part of this project. I mean, we all can dream of what we'd like in a pool, but things cost money. And of course, we don't want to spend twenty million, something like that. So that'll be kind of part of the process is weighing the importance of certain amenities in the facility.
Need further discussion? Question, please.
Berkeley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, C, consideration of purchase of antique lighting pole assemblies?
Good evening. We received a quote from City Electric Supply to purchase ten antique light pole assemblies that we need for our repair supply. City Electric Supply is a sole provider of the assembly that we utilize. We are seeking authorization to purchase ten antique light pole assemblies from City Electric Supply for a total of twenty-six thousand eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. This will be paid out of capital improvement funds. I stand for any questions you may have.
Councilperson pardon?
What are things that cause us to have to replace these light poles?
I would say almost one hundred percent of the time is vehicles driving.
Okay, so are we getting insurance payouts for those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes they're what I would call hit and run accidents to where they hit it and they just take off, so we don't catch anybody. But typically, I shouldn't say typically, most of the time, they stop and we have insurance on file that PD takes care of and Angie handles the insurance claims through that. But yeah, typically, we're going to have about two a year that get hit. I think this year, we're on track for about five. So no texting and driving.
So of those, how many have we gotten?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. I know we just had one recently, I think that was, I shouldn't use the word hit and run, but no driver was there a couple of weeks ago on North Main.
Councilman Crum?
This doesn't really have anything to do specifically with this, but a couple of times, I know it's been a couple of years since I've mentioned this, but I still wish we could see about getting some light along the path over by the skate park. There's no lighting over there when you get from the road back to the skate park. We have the nice sidewalk back there, but there's no lights on it at all. And I'd like to see if we could get two or three lights back there. And I don't want that, because say, these are like, some of these we have in reserve. I didn't know if we would maybe look at seeing if we could get at least one or two back there because it's really dark.
I know that park is only open from like sunrise to sunset, or fifteen minutes after sunrise, fifteen minutes prior to sunset, I believe.
I guess my concern is more about so that people can see back there. So like if we say it's closed, but there's no light back there, how do we know if there's anybody back there doing something?
So there's two large lights on the actual skateboard park. Is the sidewalk going to if it's not lit though?
But getting back there, it's a nice little jaunt. It's really dark back there. It's just something I wish we maybe look at.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilperson pardon?
Make a motion to accept the bid from City Electric Supply for twenty-six thousand eighty-six dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
We have motion on second to approve bid from City Electric Supply for twenty-six thousand eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. Any discussion? Question, please.
Berkeley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, D, consideration of purchase of wastewater spiral assembly?
So the wastewater treatment plant spiral assembly on the screening compactor, which compresses water out of larger inorganic process. The assembly has been in use since the plant was built in nineteen ninety-six. The assembly has rusted and snapped off. The parts are only available from the manufacturer of the actual compactor. Therefore, we are seeking authorization to contract with Parkson for the purchase and the installation for ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this will be paid out of wastewater equipment maintenance.
Twenty-six years old, why?
Councilperson pardon?
Make a motion to accept the bid from Parkson for ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
The motion on second to approve bid from Parkson for ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars? Is there any question? Sorry, any discussion? Question, please.
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, E, consideration of purchase of Parks Department truck with dump body.
So we have attempted to obtain quotes to purchase a truck with dump body to be utilized in the Parks Department. Has been a bit of a fiasco, I would say. Manufacturers are not taking orders and they don't know if they will next year. So the new vehicle will be used to pile snow in parking lots, haul brush, grass, and other items. The current dump truck will be issued to the wastewater department, will be used in our yard only. We're able to find this vehicle in Indiana, which matches our needs. The dealer will transport to us for six hundred dollars. I'm requesting authorization to purchase the twenty-twenty-two Dodge Ram three-five-hundred with dump body from Fletcher Dodge, Indiana for seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-five cents. I stand for any questions.
Councilman Crum?
I know this is a small amount, but where, so it was budgeted for seventy-one thousand and you're going about four thousand over that, where is that going? Is that just going to come from Parks Department budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid on the Park Department truck and dump body for the twenty-twenty-two Ram three-fifty from Fletcher Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Does that include the six hundred in that?
Yes.
Okay.
We have motion on second to approve the Parks Department truck with dump body purchase. Any discussion?
Question, please.
Berkeley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, F, consideration of bids for wire and Hungerford water line replacement.
So as Will stated in the budget presentation, at the June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one council meeting, staff presented using just over nine hundred and eighty-three thousand of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for construction of new water lines on wire in Hungerford. We had the bid opening at the end of June. Therefore, requesting authorization to accept the best bid for Mies Construction Incorporated for a total of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and one dollars. Due to material supply issues, the project may not begin construction until January of twenty-twenty-three.
Well, counsel, I'd like to do. Counselman Benner?
Make a motion that we approve the bid for Mies Construction in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and one dollars. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Counselman Walters?
I have a second, Mr.
Oh, okay. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we have item seven, Department of Public Works, A, administrative services. Will?
I have none.
B, city clerk. Angie?
Tomorrow is the last day to register to vote for the August second primary election, and that is the primary election, which also includes a question regarding the constitutional amendment. Back to Soli.
Thank you. Next, C, chief.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have Sergeant Chad Case as our visiting officer. He's in our investigations section, is the supervisor in there. So, say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, just wanted to remind everybody that coming up on August second, we'll be doing our annual national night out event over at the pool and hack area. So, feel free to stop by there. It'll be from six to eight on August second. Come by, we'll have the pool open, we'll have some food and activities for family and everybody to do. So, come on by and say hi.
Counselman Crum?
Chief, do you know how many complaints we had over the week of fireworks?
As far as excessive noise and like that?
Yeah.
I do not have those numbers. I can get them, though, and.
Did you notice any big change from any other year?
No, no, we didn't. In fact, we didn't have as many complaints on the fifth this year than we, we had the past. So, we were kind of toned down.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Next, Public Works. Tony?
So, our advanced metering infrastructure water meter project is slated to begin either July eighteenth or July twenty-fifth. That's where we're changing all the radio meters to AMI, is what we'll call it, AMI water meters. We currently have a thousand meters. We've been battling supply chain issues with those as well. So, we finally have a thousand meters of radios in hand that the contractor will begin installing. When they come into town to install those, they will have vehicles labeled with their company name, Vepo, V-E-P-O, and they also have badges on the employees. When they're changing a water meter out, they will knock on the door to try to communicate to the homeowner what they're doing. If they don't get an answer, they will put a door hanger on the door just to communicate that they've been there and the water meter was changed out. Changing a meter should take no less, no more than thirty minutes. Realistic, realistically, it should take about five or ten. I did put some maps in the packet of the areas they'll begin working on. As soon as we have a more detailed explanation from them where they're starting and what area they'll be working in, we'll blast kind of all of our social media and get it out there to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Recreation. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we began our registration for fall Lashkey and our fall sports. Use soccer, use volleyball, and this is here is our girls' flag football. This Friday, July fifteenth, we'll have a movie night at the pool. It's free admission. We'll be showing the movie scene two, and it'll start approximately nine forty-five. On Saturday, July sixteenth, Hayesville Pride will be having a free pool party from six-thirty to eight PM. We'll be having our indoor cornhole tournament on July twenty-third at the Activity Center. July twenty-seventh, we'll be celebrating our Activity Center's five-year anniversary and all they have been at the hack. Spreading those donuts. Ignite Nutrition is going to be bringing teas and shakes in the afternoon. Members to drive, giveaways. Come, come check us out. Look out a little bit, even just give them one. Then, we're taking registrations for our When Pigs Fly five K three series and twenty-four hour run in Donner Park on September ninth.
Thanks, Rob.
Mayor, can I have one more?
Sure.
Okay, those numbers, Mr. Crum, were, we had about five less complaints this year.
Okay.
And that was the numbers I got from nine-one-one. So, about five less this year. So, basically, it was about the same.
Okay.
Pretty even kill.
Thank you. Next, item eight, appointments. A, appointment of Marion Daly to the library board. Counselman Crum?
Make a motion that we approve the addition to Marion Daly at three-seventeen South Hungerford to the Hayesville Library Board, to affect until twenty-twenty-six.
Second. We have a motion in the second to appoint Marion Daly to the library board. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Parton?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Next, item nine, opportunity to citizens to be heard. Movement citizens to be heard. Is there anybody in line that asked a question? Thank you. Item ten, executive session, we have done. Item eleven, review of expenditures. A, summary of June expenditures. Counselperson, pardon.
I make a motion, we receive and file the expenditures.
We have a motion in the second to receive and file the June expenditures. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Next, item twelve, is the consent agenda. We have one item on there. Would you like to make a motion? Counselperson, pardon.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda of item eight. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Next, item thirteen, council items. A, council concerns. Counselman Benner?
I was contacted recently with a request for us to consider the infield at the Big Ball Diamond at Plague's Carpenter, to see if there would be any interest in upgrading that from turf to artificial turf. And reasons that were given to me for that was that it would increase the safety for the players, and there'd be fewer bad hops of the ball. I'm not a baseball player, but he's told me that especially in the spring, when the, when the turf is coming out and growing, that it's pretty clumpy. And so, there's a lot of, a lot of bad hops, is the term that he used for me, and that it would be safer for the players running to do that. I think, I think the only people that play on that field are the campus boys and the aviators. Is that correct? And the other three fields are all red clay. Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's definitely something we can look at. We can reach out to other people, other teams, all the aviators and school. Any other concerns? Counsel? All right, we'll move on to item B, council action requests, updates. A, Tony?
So, the update for Seventy Fifty Plaza, the property is still not in compliance. At the last court hearing, the property owner requested a public defender. They have a court date of tomorrow, July twelfth. Seventy-one oh six South Broadway, the trial date was set for June twenty-eighth, then his lawyer asked for a date to be continued until July seventeenth. Three Hundred Kane Drive, this is the noise complaint, June tenth, PD drafted a notice to appear. Since then, on, as of July tenth, the complaint said there has been no further issues and no longer wishes to sign a complaint on the property. So, that one's considered closed. And then, again, Three Hundred Kane Drive, an odor issue. We visited with the property owner, and they indicated they have compost pile on site very irregularly, but they did report that the pile they had, they got rid of, and we verified that, and they reported next season they will work, work on relocating that compost pile. So, case is considered closed as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, item fourteen, adjournment. Counselman Benner?
May I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Thank you.
We have a motion in the second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, thank you.